All right, it is January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. This is the time scheduled for the Planning and Zoning Commission's work-study session. I'll hereby call this meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. Into the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, ever being just as.
Moves on to the business. Item A, Citizen Review for the Zoning Code, Section Twenty-nine and Thirty Text Amendments. This is informative only. Presenter is Randy Proch.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, having your fall. We have two items named B. A, we have the opportunity for the residents, citizens to come forward and.
Right.
You mentioned that any items that are going to be standardized by the state. As we do not have any capacity or members in the item A has been addressed.
Okay, and we'll move on to item number B. Zoning Code Text Amendments from Section Twenty-nine and Thirty. The formative only presenter Randy Proch.
Thank you. And we're actually out of order, start of the session. So, hopefully last, sorry, we talked a lot about units. So everybody, they did what they thought. A little bit about landscaping, I know it was right before the holidays and I rushed that presentation very quickly. And said, uh, yes.
Thank you. That was good, that was good.
Half of us know and half of us don't.
Myself included. So I, I did a very, very quick info dump as far as what the current lacking features, let's call it, of the code are. So I didn't want to explain myself a little bit further on landscaping specifically. And there's a couple of pressing issues on parking we wanted to bring up as well. You know, as mentioned in these meetings, these work-study sessions are ongoing. I, there's just simply not the time to do a comprehensive rewrite in the next two years. I've put it on my calendar for two thousand twenty-seven, once Litchfield Square and La Loma, the Hilltop are done. And schools open, the library is open, museums open. But until such time, we're going to keep pot-shotting around and address hot-button issues, let's call it. So first of which is Section Thirty Walls Landscaping and Fences, specifically regarding thirty dot oh five, which is Landscape Design Standards and Requirements. These are broken down between single-family, multifamily, and then a catch-all of non-residential, which includes commercial, industrial, and resort. Though the resort has, you know, a residential component. The only other part of code that mentions landscaping is Twenty-seven C. Twenty-seven C is city center, Litchfield Square, which only differs back to Section Thirty. There's a lot of text tonight. I'm going to be doing a lot of reading. Just hang with me because there is a point to the madness, I'd say. So as you progress through the code, under single-family districts, it has the following standards. All required landscaping areas must be covered. Makes sense, no bare dirt. Landscaping shall include a combination of ground cover, shrubs, trees. Makes sense again. Landscape irrigation systems, if necessary, shall be installed, properly maintained. You'll see the ellipsis. It just goes on a little bit further. I didn't want to put too much text in these slides. Decomposed granites permitted, trees and shrubs, three species that are reasonably appropriate. Paving materials, water feature sculptures may be included. Underground automatic irrigation systems are encouraged. This is essentially the totality of what we prescribe for single-family districts. So what I mean by that is there are no standards quantity. How many trees, how many shrubs, how many, how much ground cover? Or open space or street front? Now, don't think of these standards as only someone's front and rear yards. We have situations, you know, the village of the Greens would be good examples where it's not just yards. There are open space areas. There are landscape tracks along the streets that need to be maintained and properly planted. So I have no way of prescribing how much that is, where it's planted, what it includes, what it doesn't include, because there are no standards associated in the single-family district. I will counter that with, as we look into the other sections, just to give a sense of what should be there. Under multifamily districts, it actually starts with buffer conditions. What I mean by that is multifamily to single-family. There is an opportunity to separate, you know, those very large buildings from our single-family neighbors, per se. So in this case, an average of fifteen-foot-wide landscape areas required along all interior property lines. The word average, I think, is very helpful because you'll have situations that, you know, the, well, what if the driveway to get back out to the road is twelve feet away? If I violated it, no, because by, you know, the whole length of that property line, you have the opportunity to address as far as fifteen. Sometimes it's twelve, sometimes it's eighteen, but as long as you maintain that along that whole stretch. There's a bit of a prescription here. Trees with a minimum size, twenty-four-inch box, two-inch caliper, shall be planted in manners to provide a buffer. And a six-foot-high masonry walls require along interior property. So now we're getting into a little bit more understanding when someone comes in and says, I want to develop with my family. I can prescribe now that you need to have a fifteen-foot buffer with twenty-four-inch box trees. Street frontage, so along Wigwong, Camelback, Litchfield, Dicehurt, what have you. We have a little bit more information again. Long public street frontages, an average of twenty-foot-wide landscape area. Okay, easy enough. Shall incorporate a minimum of fifteen-gallon trees, smaller trees. That gives them more time to grow. You put the bigger trees against the single-family homes, so you have in a more immediate buffer, let's call it. And a minimum of twenty-four, twi- twenty-five percent, excuse me, of the required trees will be twenty-four-inch box. Why a quarter? Why not half? Why not all twenty-four-inch box? Every city I've worked in has a different ratio for how this makes sense or doesn't make sense at the time it was written. You know, I found, I found some information from Mike Cartsonis. Long timers know he was the city planner for about fifty years, from the Goodyear Tire Company days, through incorporation and then went to part-time, taught at A S U for a while. It was known that when we became a city, we adopted a zoning code that just somewhat fit who we were. And then a lot of situations where we had to put a P D overlay on a bunch because it didn't exactly transcribe appropriately. So we're, we're still kind of trying to come out of that and try to make sense of who we are now and make the code fit accordingly. Lastly, on multifamily onsite, which means everywhere that's not a parking lot, it's not a buffer. Foundation, that would be against the building, against the base of the building, and then the parking lot. You have information regarding those. So within common open space, twenty-four-inch box at a ratio of one tree per dwelling unit. Okay, this is the first time we can actually say quantity, because you have hundred units, you have hundred trees. Foundation planting, so we utilize complement building elevations. And I don't know how providing shade works for shrubs. But that's just another thing that's just lacking, I'd say, in the code, and that's why we're talking tonight. Minimum fifty percent of the building frontage shall have foundation plantings. Why fifty percent? Because the other fifty percent is storefronts, you know, units, trash enclosures, what have you. Things get in the way, parking spaces. So this is an opportunity to create areas for all the things that go along with development. Landscape parking islands, leased every twelve spaces, five feet wide and one tree. Oddly, no shrubs called out in this. For non-residential resorts, industrial, what have you. Required yards confronting on public streets in the commercial district shall be entirely landscaped, excluding driveways and walkways. You'll notice that this defers from a multifamily. We're calling out multifamily twenty-foot-wide average. Instead, here on non-residential, we're saying it's the same as the building setback. Whatever the building setback is, how much landscaping you need to have. In industrial districts, the following landscaping setbacks should be applied. Along section line arterials, Camelback, Dicehurt, Litchfield, the big ones, shall be entirely landscaped. Along other streets, reduced, actually, ten-foot landscape yards. We only have one industrial district, that's Monument Point over on El Mirage, myself, Caliber Collision, Burger King. But same for onsite and foundation landscaping, ten percent of net area shall be landscaped in commercial, five percent in industrial. These are very low. I'm going to show some comparisons later on. But the idea that the most intense vehicular use, noises, smells, traffic, the industrial sites have the least amount of landscaping is counterintuitive. You want to try to combat those situations with additional green space. Foundation planting is down now to only one-third. Now you have more storefront windows, service entry doors, you know, patio spaces for commercial situations, so on, so. Parking lot, again, a little bit slightly different than multifamily. Multifamily was straight up one every twelve spaces. Non-residential has a five percent on top of that, where that five percent is and what, where you quantify five percent here is not part of your onsite landscaping or part of your street frontage landscaping. That's a hard thing to, you know, find success with. And then down at the bottom there, parking areas separated from adjacent residential uses or districts by ten-foot landscape strip. This is another curiosity. You have your building setback against residential. You have a buffer condition for multifamily, but here in non-residential, it's just parking is a ten-foot buffer in that situation. But no planting requirements. I don't know how much to put there. That's a real, hopefully a more comprehensive understanding of what we started talking about last week. Are there any questions before I, you know, press on?
Any questions? See, no, go ahead.
Did you get into, I didn't want to miss it, but replacement?
So I think we talked about that last, if I remember correctly, that was last year. Thankfully, so. I don't know that, I, I don't have it in the slide to answer your question, Commissioner Lawrence. I can certainly continue to pursue that for you. The way I've used it previously is called healthy and growing manner. This is seeming more familiar to me, the more I talk about it from our last conversation. Most commercial situations are good about maintaining healthy and growing. They want the shade. Some commercial uses are fearful of blocking signs and they take a tree and make it look like a very large piece of broccoli. There's a certain fast food burger establishment over on El Mirage Room.
Trees die off or whatever, so the trees replaced so that you don't end up with, the stomps are empty.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. If, if our code had planting requirements to the conversation before we started today, we could do a code enforcement case and say, based on requirements, you're short. I don't have requirements, so to know whether they're short or not would rely on us going in the archives to try and find a landscape plan from the time of construction. So that's going to be, it's, it's an interesting situation as far as how do we address that? For other situations that we've changed code sometime in the past, we've had a drop-dead date. Kind of like what we did with walls, you know, from earlier conversations last year. Your wall is built before twenty-ten, it's these standards. If it's after twenty-ten, it's these standards. What I would fear is that we would create a place in time here in two thousand twenty-five that says, okay, starting today, any new plantings you need to maintain, but anything before can be left as is. The counter is, we adopt this new code and we go in force and we say everyone's in violation. There may be a little bit of kickback with, you know, how aggressive we are with that. Both are the right answers.
Just curious to the chair, so if, um, these properties are purchased and built upon, then is it the owner's responsibility to maintain landscaping outside the property? Or is it the city's responsibility? City, was it?
Question for you, I believe, I think she's.
Yes, so property owners are required to maintain their street frontages. That's correct. There's, I say that with a broad brush. There are a couple of instances in the village that through the plating, we've ended up with some city-owned slices of those streets. I don't know how, I don't know why, but there are invisible lines in this part of the decomposed grant, which is the H O A. There's lines that are ours. It's one of the things hopeful in two thousand twenty-eight, we can approach the village and say, this doesn't make sense anymore, and try to address that more holistic. Moving forward. So one of the things we've talked about through these text amendment updates is what's going around on around the valley. So here's an opportunity to address, you know, how this will be the same information, just in less paragraphs, and instead in just a table. So this is from Fransen Buckeye, four categories, site enhancement, the onsite site perimeter, street frontage, the parking area and the building foundation are self-explanatory. And these tell you exactly residential, commercial, mixed-use and industrial, what your requirements are in more, you know, you have your site area, okay. Do the math, divide by six hundred, one tree, multiply by five, five shrubs, so on and so forth. I have another example here. I forgot who this is. This might be Avondale or Glendale, I don't recall. But another way of just saying, here's right-of-way planting quantities and sizes, okay? Is it a local street collector, minor arterial parkway? And you're prescribed ten-gallon trees, twenty-four-inch box trees, and then how much on your shrubs? We, in all of that text I've read, it's never stated what it is as far as planting requirements. So we, staff, me, myself, I think there's an opportunity to easily address this through tables instead of just more paragraphs of text. But to Commissioner Lawrence's point, it's, I'll get the gauge of city council and having a workshop with them on similar subjects next week. I'll get a gauge from them as far as whether we think the line in the sand makes sense or, you know, let's make this make sense for everyone at this time. Here's just how to calculate percentages. As mentioned, commercials usually twenty to thirty percent of that side area. Ours is ten, industrials usually ten, ours is five. You notice there at the bottom of the Buckeye example, the percentage of parts will be landscaped residential. You'll see it's a zero to thirty percent range. What I mean by that and what is applicable here is if you're on Old Litchfield Road, you're on Bird Lane, you know, the R one or the R E zoning districts, most of your property is landscaping. So there wouldn't be a need to add on any more to that. But areas that are very intense, like Renaissance Villas or Village, excuse me, those condo units that are very tight cachet, which is very tight. You're adding density, so there should be a correlation with landscaping, so that it doesn't become just a parking lot in those buildings. It should correlate to more landscaping because you have more people there. They should be able to passively or actively recreate in those spaces as well. So here's, here's the start of what we could look like, I guess you could say. Based on what we've written so far and had on the books, I can fill in some of these blanks. Uh, but there's a lot of blanks I couldn't fill in based on what was being said. So this is the same information, instead of paragraph form, just, you know, in a table form. So for example, middle, middle, for multifamily street frontage, we prescribe it. It's an average of twenty-foot width, but it relies on you going through those paragraphs of text to find this information. Again, when trying to work with developers that come in, they say, you know, how can we go about this? Well, here's your, here's your stack of materials, go forth versus, you know, having these sorts of tables available. Same can be done for the planting requirements. You'll notice a few more highlights here as far as, we don't have it on the books today. You know, for example, as talked about parking lots, yeah, one twenty-four-inch box tree for island, sure. Multifamily talked about, there's one tree per dwelling unit as far as the onsite goes, but as far as street frontage, I don't know how many trees based on how much street frontage. I don't know how many trees or shrubs based on how much long your building is in the foundation. These are things that, you know, certainly if it's the direction of this commission, I can look back, I can look around, and we can create these standards so that we can start enforcing these standards, so we can start having standardization. The other part of this research would include going back in time, seeing if we can find landscape plans to see if there was any sort of consistency with those, so we can hopefully not be out of left field saying, you know, you need one tree every eight feet. Be pretty consistent as far as, you know, how that would work. That wasn't, I don't think, as bad as we ended up on December as far as the information that we have and the information that we pretty much do not have at this time. So here's already our halfway point as far as conversations tonight on landscaping. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or take directions as far as, you know, our next step towards a redlined and clean version of a text amendment.
But, uh, how you doing, Randy?
Hi, good. Uh, my question would be, is the, and this is, I guess, probably more residential, but the, the, the areas that we have H O As, the Greens, the Villages, I assume they have landscape. What do you call it? Uh, requirements? So have we looked at those? Not that we want to go follow what each ways we're doing, but seeing what kind of consistency that they have compared to what you might be thinking. Sure, certainly. So Commissioner O'Connor, we've had the, I guess, fortune of being handed over a copy of C C N R's for the Greens and the Villages. The Greens was a document from nineteen eighty-nine and the Villages was much more recent, but we do have copies of those. I've perused those and I've worked with the Village H O A recently on things. Their P D standard language from their development plan for the village is almost verbatim with their C C N Rs. There wasn't much difference between the two. Uh, I guess to the questions earlier, certainly if the H O As is a violation of their C C N Rs, they can let the homeowner know. The, the single-family focus generally in other cities, and it could be in ours as well, it's up to you guys, is our enforcement is not usually within someone's front yard as far as we're not there counting shrubs and counting if they have a tree or not. You know, for some people that have made very wide driveways, a tree might not be an option anymore. Ours, especially for the Greens and the Village, would be everywhere else, I think, to your point. So, uh, I'll recheck the Greens, C C N Rs. I don't remember them having anything specifically about landscaping. They probably do, but, you know, our focus is, as a municipality, is generally everywhere else that's not ER. If that makes sense.
Any more questions or comments? Go ahead, Alvy.
Um, with chair. Um, do we have anything current that relates to feet, trees and their distance from roofs? I, I know that there was a com- there was a thing on your matrix up there that I believe said the foundation. I'm just primarily concerned about the roofs because of the roof rats that we have. And apparently now they're carrying some sort of rat mite that is causing problems too. But I don't know if we could consider that or do something along those lines or.
Commissioner Alvy, it's absolutely something that we can do and should do. I think of a bike street, you know, twenty feet from us, growing between two buildings. And wondering how that's going to affect building foundations and, you know, cracking concrete. The, you know, the, the prime example, similar to the example you provided, is always the Dalbergia Sisu. Sister tree is known to be notorious shallow rooter, goes through pipes and ruins everything. Uh, to your point, as far as building foundation landscaping, from other cities, building foundation landscaping is strictly shrubs and ground cover for that reason, because it's surrounded between a sidewalk and building face. And that little five-to-ten-foot area would be very hard to have something that grows well. So in that situation, certainly we can address it more specifically and more precisely.
I think my concern is not even as much about the foundation of the buildings, which obviously that's important, but the roof rat issue that we have in our city and, and just even the distance of branches from roofs and, and things along those lines, because I, I know that it's a pretty big issue in certain areas around.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I don't think we have anything on the books today that talk about, you know, for residents not to cause themselves harm as far as how much they should trim up their own vegetation. I'd have to think if we have anything as far as municipal buildings and be, with a couple of citrus trees right in our front yard that might be an issue over at City Hall. That's something, uh, I don't think that we've prescribed before, and I don't think I've done, you know, in my past either, but certainly I'll look into it to see if we have best practices towards that.
Thank you.
We have houses in the park that trees are growing up through the roof.
Roof, I know. And I know there's some that it's in the middle of the homes themselves. And I just, and that's why I don't know how it would really be handled anyway. But I do know that it's an issue and now in addition to the rats themselves, apparently, like I said, they're carrying some sort of mites that are apparently causing problems for other animals as well as humans. And so it's even becoming more of a problem, I guess, here in Litchfield Park than it was previously. So I don't know. And I mean, where there's one or two rats, there will soon be hundreds, it seems. And, and I know that people have tried a lot of things, even people have brought feral cats into the community, into our city to try to get rid of the rats and rat poison, and then their pet cats die. And I mean, it's, I think it's a bigger problem than a lot of us are aware of. I just primarily hear from people in my community, around my area, my few streets around me. And I know three people have had cats die because they've eaten rats that have been poisoned. And I know other people who have removed insulation in their attics and re-insulated and sprayed. And, and it, it just seems like it's, it's a problem that we still, as a city, don't really have a handle on. And I think it, it's getting worse, like I said, now that we've got mites and who knows what other diseases are going to come next. So I don't know. It's just something we could maybe be mindful of. I don't know how we can proceed, but.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on this section? Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Okay.
I will plan to have a redlined and clean version of a text event for you at our next meeting and address all these questions tonight.
I'm sorry, actually, I do have one question. I, Randy, I can't remember if I emailed you about this, but I think it kind of has to do with this, but maybe not, so apologize. But the median on Dicehurt between Indian School and, and Camelback, whose, whose jurisdiction is that or who, who manages that or maintains it? Because it's, it's, it's so ugly and not maintained.
The same, the same people that write tickets for speeding. It's no man's land.
So is it county, is it Avondale?
It's what it's supposed to be and what it does, it's two different things.
Commissioner O'Connor, you did email me late last year. I did forward that along to Kyle, our Public Works Director, as he does maintain, his crews maintain everything that's essentially within roadways. I don't know if he responded to you or with me on that. I can follow up once more and see if we can get an answer for you.
Anything else on the side? I'm not seeing any. Are we going on to Section Thirty next?
Uh, back for section.
Backwards, went back to twenty-nine. But, go ahead.
Uh, Chair members of commission, the other, and again, I'm, I don't wish to, you know, keep pot-shotting and looking at individual sentences with you. It's, it's our intent to have a workable, comprehensive code that can address these situations. But, you know, we're almost, what, thirty years, thirty-five years late to the game as far as trying to make our build condition now fit into a code that wasn't written accordingly. Again, a lot of text to cover, but it's, it's a shortened message as far as what we're trying to say. So this has recently come up as we're looking at Litchfield Square. So this is development-driven and it's a pressing issue as we have one that should be golden shovel ready in the next two to three weeks and two more that should follow hopefully by summertime. So here is the long bit of text. Each parking space shall contain a rectangular area at least twenty feet long, including a maximum of an eighteen-inch overhang and nine feet wide. Lines demarcating parking spaces shall be drawn as a rectangle, one foot wide by twenty feet long. Such lines shall not be included in the required parking space dimensions. Each rectangular demarcation line may be drawn at various angles in relation to curbs or aisles, so long as the parking spaces so. or aisles, so long as the parking spaces so created contain within the rectangular area meet the requirements of the section. If you figured it out the first time, that's great. If not, I got a visual that can help you. This is Costco striping. It's, it's, I don't, I'm not endorsed by Costco. This is not a Costco endorsement, but it's the only one that I know of that always has this to bear where Costco you're gonna choose. What this is, and we do have the one on the left is the picture we have in code. It's designed so that you stay centered. So the actual space dimensions is midpoint of that rectangular to midpoint of the next rectangle. So the overall spot is nine, nine and a half, 10 feet wide, depending on jurisdiction, but you're pinched on purpose so that your car is more squared up and you have those gaps created so you can swing doors open. It's not actually more space, but you're, you're more true to that parking space. I bring this up and read that section of code because there's only one parking lot in the entire city. It's the Dignity Health Building that actually did this striping appropriately. Not a single other parking space has ever been drawn this way. And I don't know why. It's been on the books, but just no one's ever done it. This ties together, I promise. So our code is nine feet by 20 feet. Goodyear and Buckeye are similar, nine feet by 20 feet. Avondale Peoria, a little more generous, let's call it, with nine and a half by 20. And Glendale, the most generous, 10 by 20. Cars don't seem to be getting smaller. Cars seem to be getting bigger. So everyone seems to know a parking, you know, lot in their minds whenever they go to this shopping center or that shopping center. I hate parking there. And why is that? Is it because of where the drive aisles are? Is it because of how condensed you feel? So just thinking about these other cities that you may peruse around, again, if you've been to Goodyear or Buckeye, you're like, this feels tight, same standard as ours. If you've gone to Avondale, Peoria, Glendale, you feel better. That's because they're wider. Little caveat there at the bottom, Goodyear parking garages are nine feet by 18 feet. I tell you that because in the square, I know we don't have a staff report on work day sessions, but I'm essentially giving you a staff report during this presentation. So you're up to date on everything that's happening around the city. We are working with a parking garage consultant. This consultant is, you know, one of those de facto, this is all they do, 24/7, 365 quarters, do parking rations. This same consultant did the two in the Heritage District in Gilbert. This is essentially the same model. We're looking at economies of scale to say that we think this will fit nicely within the parameters. Right now, we have 320 spots that fit in this garage and that garage is based on our standards of nine by 20. If we were to go to the more generous Peoria at the Avondale and go nine and a half, it's about a 5% loss. If we go to the Glendale, it's a 10% loss. This is one of those things that now being within an enclosure, still the same area, still the same drive aisle width, still the same stall dimensions, but there's a sense of discomfort when you're now surrounded. Is your truck gonna meet that clearance or you're gonna hit that, you know, swinging piece of PVC above you? We are hesitant, but we're opening this conversation to this commission. We are hesitant to expand or widen our parking stalls because we start losing efficiencies in garages. Garage is about 10 times the cost per stall and we will have a parking shortage in the square. We're somewhat designed to have a parking shortage because we didn't want to, you know, have just large parking lots throughout the square. We want a nexus of buildings and activity. So, you know, we plan to offset that with this garage. Introducing these things will keep, there's a point to be made at the end of this presentation that will kind of wrap some of these subjects together, I promise. Next bit of just paragraph of information, the change in use. And again, this ties with Litchfield Square and why we're bringing this up with you this evening. We have this section that reads as follows. When the use of any existing building structure or premises changes such that, change requires an increase in the total number of required parking spaces or the parcel of greater than 10% or 20 spaces, then such additional parking spaces and parking and loading area shall be provided for the entire building, structure or premise, either on that premise or by a joint off-site parking agreement. Essentially, if you were a office and it's one to 200, you become a restaurant and it's one to 100, where are you gonna put all those stalls? You need to now tear up your landscaping, tear down your building and make more surface parking. It's not, it's not a great solution. Let's, let's double down on that a little bit further. All right, calculation of required off-street parking in general, except as otherwise provided in a subsection. One parking area may contain required parking spaces for more than one use, but the required parking space assigned to one use may not be credited to any other use. The number of required parking spaces shall be the sum of the number of parking spaces required for each use. Okay, now we have a mixed use situation. Offices eight to five. Dinner restaurants starts at five to 10 p.m. This says, no, you have to have parking for both. But if someone works late, staff arrives early, you need to park both, even though after that little half an hour, one hour overlap, parking lot's half empty. Let's keep going. Non-simultaneous uses, okay, now we've got to solve because we can have these sorts of situations in Litchfield Square. I'll read for you again. Where there's a combination of uses on a parcel, if, in the opinion of the zoning administrator, myself, the uses would not be operated simultaneously, the number of parking spaces shall be determined by being used with the highest parking demand. A properly drawn and executed instrument shall be signed and notarized by the various parties involved in the details, how the reduced parking shall be provided if one or more users, users than shared parking contract vacate the premise. We'll keep going. This is only half the information. If the uses change, the owners of the new uses shall once again submit to the city a draft shared parking agreement for the city to review. The city will evaluate the proposed uses and determine if ample parking is provided onsite. If the city's determination is such, ample parking is provided onsite. Shared parking agreement shall be recorded as a properly drawn and executed instrument, signed and notarized, and a copy of the instrument shall be given to the city. If the city determines that the site would be inadequately parked for the proposed uses of the additional parking spaces shall be provided or such uses will not be approved and a certificate of occupancy shall not be issued. What it says is, if we don't agree with you, you're not coming into the business. That is, that is not what we're trying to accomplish in Litchfield Square. I would tell you that Frye's Plaza, the Albertson's Plaza, where we do have other commercial centers, they are overparked. Frye's specifically is notorious for having at least 10 to 20% extra parking spaces available. They never want someone to be turned away, so they provide extra parking on purpose so that you always think that you can get a spot, you can go and shop. This, what's really remaining to be determined is Litchfield Square. And trying to provide this information to developers in Litchfield Square is, is a detriment, quite frankly, to our economic drivers. We'll keep going because there's, there's more prescription. I promise this makes sense to the end. Shared parking may be approved by zoning administrator if a per, parking easement is recorded and is in a form approved by the city attorney. The number of required parking spaces for any one use may be reduced to a maximum of 20% of the total spaces required. Any request of reduction greater than 20% shall be substantiated by calculations based on the urban land institute standards in a manner acceptable to the city. That's, please don't. No reserved parking, last bullet here. When more than one business shares parking areas, parking spaces shall be not reserved for more, one business's exclusion of the other businesses. I tell you all of that to tell you that that's, that's a lot of like, and the idea that subsequent uses in Litchfield Square should, you know, one move out and someone else move in, that they would have to go through this rigmarole or we're not issuing a CFO and you're not moving in, turning away business is exhausting. So 27C, City Center Zoning, Litchfield Square Development does not have specific parking standards. It defers back to our parking standards and ratios. This is an excerpt of that table, the ones we do anticipate to be the users of Litchfield Square, commercial, office, grocer, restaurants. They all have different ratios. Woody did an exercise, Woody Scout, former city attorney. I've done a similar exercise to say, what if scenarios from now to infinitum? Okay, if, if this building is 40,000, if that one's 50,000, if this one has office during the day, but if it's a ratio of this, and we've both provided white papers, five pages long as far as, we think the parking is something like 1,400 stalls. And we have about 300 on the streets, we'll have another 602 garages. So the remainder has to be done through all these developers. That's a tall ask and that's a lot of math for each one of these folks to do. What we've determined and what we've discussed internally, but part of the conversation tonight to try to get to the aha moment, hopefully everyone has, is we think we're gonna be about 50/50 on retail and restaurants. Restaurant ratio is one to 50 on the dining and one to 150 on the kitchen. Generally speaking, this isn't the same for everything. Those establishments are about half kitchen, you know, half, you know, boiler room, fire riser, bathrooms and about half dining space. Take those two together, restaurants in general are about a one to 100 ratio. It's just a simpler way to say the same thing. In other cities, Goodyear, Glendale, Peoria, for example, general retail is a one to 300 ratio. Okay, so if half the uses are one to 100, half are one to 300. 50/50 mix, which is tell you across the board, it's a one to 200 average. We've run that calculation the same way as the five page calculation. It's a wash. It's within, you know, 5% difference. I tell you all that to tell you this. We are prescribing and suggesting this change to 27C of the City Center Zoning. As written today, parking requirements are set forth in section 29. Parking loading regulations are submitted by city council through an approved project's parking demand study. Everything that was just talked about earlier as far as going through the rigmarole. Instead, our suggestion for each night, again, this is not a public hearing, this is not the recommendation of meeting, this is just the word study. Minimum parking requirements will follow a commercial use category as set forth in section 29, parking loading regulations. Even though we have these specific uses called out, there's another category where actually, as you say, it's top category, commercial, one to 200. Now, when that's supplied versus the other uses, it's unclear. You know, in fact, if you look at the table today, the table today says use current code, required spaces current code. Why this footnote? I don't know. There's probably at some point an old code and this was changed to it. We think that this is a good solution for the most important part of our city yet to be developed. Instead of everything that's being prescribed, as simply just one to 200. Again, that way, you're more restaurant rate. I don't want to turn you away, I don't want to deny your super documents. You're more office rate. It's still one to 200, but this way you leave at five, someone's using your parking lot. It's in our CCNRs in Litchfield Square that no one can prohibit parking across parcels. This doesn't apply obviously to the church. This doesn't apply to TR Verde, which are independent and not within the zoning, but there should not be a situation where you're on lot one and lot two and parking spots on lot three and someone's gonna tow you. That's prohibited. That is the latter part, former part as far as nine by 20. I guess they don't tie as well as I thought together, but those are the two, I guess, opening statements for conversations this evening. And if we have consensus today through those two topics of conversation, we'll have a redlined and clean version in our next scheduled meeting.
Questions, comments? Who wants to start?
I, I want to make sure I've understood this. We're talking like a half an inch, right?
Six inches.
Oh, it's six inches.
Nine and a half.
Okay, okay. So my thinking would be if I get a parking structure that I think it would be prudent to, to have a certain percentage be nine and a half and a certain percentage could be nine. So then hopefully smaller cars don't park in the bigger stall for a truck and vice versa. So I think it, that might be a reasonable approach. So we're not losing as many spaces.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to what you're saying, I want to try to visit the motorcycle parking. And can you do motorcycle spaces instead of having motorcycle take up a whole parking space?
So Commissioner Lawrence, oddly, we, we don't prescribe them in our code for some reason. We have bicycle stalls, we have vehicular stalls. You'll note in the square, we do have, I think we call them golf cart slash motorcycle parking stalls that are half size, but that is something we can certainly carry forward into garages as well as, I say Litchfield Square is the only thing left. Obviously Sun Health, you know, Camelback and Litchfield Road has a lot more to go. We don't think it'll be similar by any means, but you know, this, this isn't the finish line per se as far as development goes. So yeah, we can certainly add that into the code as well. Any other questions on stall dimensions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes.
At the beginning with Litchfield Square, when they dug down that 20 or 25 feet and put in the big detention basin and down there, we should have just moved over a little bit and started at the bottom of the garage and put in a first, first, first subterranean level, you know, pouring concrete after the excavation is already done, but whatever. What if should have, could have? The, because we are a golf cart community along with the motorcycles, then golf carts should be allowed. And bicycles, because people want to bring their bikes around, so small designated area.
Yeah, I mean, cause if parking's gonna be limited, a challenge, the more golf carts, bikes and things, it sent people, right? That would be great. Cause what, what is, what is kind of the plan or regarding golf carts in this field square?
So Commissioner O'Connor, there's, there's a short way to answer your question, I'm sure, but I'd like to give as much context as I can in these conversations. So golf carts in Litchfield Park are permitted, using quotes, on purpose on sidewalks. That is an absolute violation of state law, which doesn't allow motor vehicles on sidewalks. However, city law, even though they're tagged plates, mirrors, lights, and they can and are a motor vehicle on the road, we do allow them on sidewalks. We call it a pathway system. We have our pathway systems. There's marketing materials from the seventies I have with people on golf carts on the pathway system. So we, we fully embrace them as a form of travel, even though we have pedestrians and bicycles doing a much different speed on sidewalks. True ironies of that point, we've recently lowered Camelback and Litchfield Road to 35 miles an hour, which does permit golf carts on road. But then recently, I think in October, city council passed no golf carts on Camelback and Litchfield as a tightening of the restrictions of state law to a city level. The other part of this, to answer your question more directly, is though we allow golf carts on sidewalks everywhere, Litchfield Square has signs that are posted, you can see today, that does not permit golf carts on any sidewalks within Litchfield Square. So they should, a need to act as a motor vehicle, there are golf cart stalls on the streets that address those situations. The only other spot to, I think to get to your question more directly, to handle them, would be to dedicate some of the areas of the garages towards those situations. The good thing about all this is until these buildings are built, right now, all of these lots are being used as temporary parking. You can see me sometimes out there striping lots because we keep having these events. Next one's March 1st and March 2nd. So we've had the opportunity with our drone pilot, go take snapshots as far as how many cars are coming in for these events. It's something like 1,323, as I was counting each one on each picture, I may have lost count once or twice, but the good news for all that might say that is when we're fully built out, when every lot is developed, when they all have parking lots, when we have one or two parking garages, it's something like 1,323 stalls available. So we think we can accommodate the vehicles once built out, but to your point about the golf carts, we're gonna have to do a little more consideration as far as how and where we can consider those. I hope that answers the question.
So speaking of the golf carts.
Yes.
Over here on another little, little street and, you know, at the end it's lined, you know, just drawn out with the cones and stuff. Put a picture up to show people how to park and you can. And you can get two golf carts and one of those little things if they back in or pull in instead of parking parallel. And, uh, you know, it hasn't been an issue so far, but you know, as more traffic comes through.
Certainly. It is, uh, Commissioner Derry. We ought to be careful about that. Just because every other stall is a angled stall or a parallel stall. So to ask the golf cart, which again is a motor vehicle in the eyes of the law, to violate that parking stall intentionally, I don't think the city can uh, put in paper and put in writing, but as far as if you want to talk offline outside of these meetings, outside of these microphones, as far as the solution, no one's going to cite them for doing it, but I, I don't think that we can tell them to park inappropriately.
That's regular car parking or vehicle parking. I'm talking those designated ones are for golf carts.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, the little mopeds and whatever.
Yes.
Those just on that street. If we, if we were to get people to understand, then we get two in one instead of having the, uh, the cart have to come over and take a big space. I mean, realistically, they could go across the street and go in to grab a lot, but they don't.
Understand. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So the feedback I've heard is, you know, within the garage, there may be an opportunity to relax a bit on the parking stalls. Is there anyone that has objection to keeping our nine foot by twenty foot stalls as stated?
What is, uh, sitting here pondering this. When you go over to Fries or Ace Hardware or Times Square, the width of the stalls is very comfortable. I don't know what, what it is, but I do know my, my wife and I are kind of mundane at what restaurants we go to. So we're either in Times Square or we're down at Dino's. Down shopping center down the road and Dino's, uh, as you might imagine, for me, if it's a very narrow space, the question is, whose door is going to get dinged? Mine or the person next to me getting out? I don't have any of that here. I have the Fries Center. They apparently, by the time it was designed, I'm guessing it's kind of wider. And just me, me personally, you know, at six foot four and two hundred and fifty pounds, I will take the wider, wider. So the other real quick comment, this is kind of irrelevant, I guess, but one of the issues, most of what we're talking about is what's going to happen in Litchfield Square. So we're all built out. So beyond that, then the question comes up. You know, what are we really talking about? And the one thing that's kind of going through my head, over the last year, we have lost dozens of forty-year-old pine trees that have died or come down. Pine trees and palms, uh, the queen palms, I understand, whatever. So one of the things I'm thinking is, whatever we put together as far of it, you know, a property owner might not want to have trees. They may want to do something different now that they're having to take a tree down, you know, which is not, not cheap. Um, and of course, those trees didn't start at thirty feet or whatever they are. So it's going to be, whatever goes in is going to be different, you know, from the other. So my cul, my cul-de-sac alone is lost for six houses. I think we've lost six big pine trees over the last couple of years. You know, as all the heat went up and everything else.
Yeah.
So we're, you know, we just got, we took several out, we're taking another one out. And then my wife has a master plan of what she wants to do, and there are going to be trees in the backyard, whatever. But I, I was sitting here as I was listening to it and thinking, I was feeling a little prickly because I was thinking, you know, the, we've maintained this tree or the owners for forty years or whatever it is. And now I'm hearing about things as far as replacing and whatever, and I'm thinking, well, the tree wasn't forty feet tall back in the day. It started in a much smaller. So when we get to that point, because it's not going to be as big of an issue, I don't think. We want to keep that in mind. And then the other thing we want to keep in mind, and it comes up more in residential, when there are citations that have been issued in the residential areas, uh, it just comes up more often. You don't usually have fries refusing to do something or caliber collision refusing to do something. That doesn't really come up at a little city court. So when it does, when things do come up, it's property owners generally that have a funny idea about their rights to the, their property as to how that's defined. And other neighbors have funny ideas thinking that it shouldn't be like that at all, that it'll all be taken down, which is not even what we want. So anyway, I'll leave that alone. That's just sort of my musings. I'm, I'm sitting here.
Thank you, Professor. And, uh, to answer your question, uh, a quick online measurement says ten foot width on the stalls at Fries. Just to note, nine foot is a minimum, though anyone that wishes developer, that wishes to enlarge certainly can. The landscaping is a curious thing because there's, there's a lot of vegetation that has a forty-foot, uh, expectancy as far as how long that life is going to be. The other real unfortunate situation is, you know, uh, there's, there's a concern of shock. As you get a big box, you can go to certain nurseries and they'll sell you the, the specimen size, but it's, it's a fifty fifty as far as if it's going to take, if it's the exact right time of year and soil conditions, but that's why so many times we see new developments, it's twigs, uh, just to, because this is a workday session, this is a conversation amongst us. It became such an issue in my former employments that what is considered a fifteen gallon now, you wouldn't be any the wiser that it's shrub. So we had to make sure when those things occurred, they still put up the tree sticks, they still put up the band. Otherwise, the landscaping crew would come by, cupcake it, chop it and think it's a shrub, and now we've just lost the tree. So it's, it's, there's, for every good intention, there seems to be learned lessons as far as, uh, the conceptual and the written word versus the practical.
Oh, and one last, one last point. I don't know what when the C V S was built, I don't know what all the requirements were for them. But they have several, uh, areas there where currently at some point in time, there was a tree. The tree is gone, but the low planter is still there. And if you drive up to it, you can't see it once you've parked. And if, if there's a car on the other side of you, it's even less visible. Well, if the car on the other side leaves, then you come out and you forget that there's this thing there and then end up dry, so I said we could do this. Drive over the planter because it's, you know, it's only that, that high. So I don't, I was just wondering from the standpoint of enforcement on some of the tree planting and whatnot and just even that way, because they, now is a hazard, you know, if you don't, if you have a tree in it, everybody can see it.
Certainly. And it's, it's going to be one of those things, just to, you know, Commissioner Lawrence's point earlier, I have seen, uh, the C V S site plan, so hopefully somewhere, uh, there is a landscape plan that we can refer to. You know, it's, uh, I think I'm, uh, ten days away from seven months. And, uh, the good, the good and the bad of that is, you know, my predecessors were never threw anything away. Pam, if any of you know Pam from way back, Pam never threw a single thing away. Uh, and Woody, uh, once departed from the city, left a legitimate mountain of files. So the solutions are somewhere in the building and, you know, hopefully as time progresses and I'm interviewing two interns, uh, tomorrow from ASU, we'll get there. And instead of these potshots, we'll have better answers, more holistic answers, you know, during these conversations.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Do you want to be charging stations planned?
Uh, Commissioner Lawrence, this is a workday session, so I'm happy to chat, uh, more internal baseball, inside baseball, whichever the case is. There is, uh, what's known as a guaranteed max price of G M P, uh, for each phase of development. As we've gone through Litchfield Square, we are on G M P six, which is the last one. As things ebbed and flowed over the first five, uh, things have been cut out or reduced over those, uh, to the point where our future C I P is somewhat backlogged with things that have been removed. I'd say that because G M P six suffers being the last phase and takes the scraps of what's left. So the conduit to the empty pipe is there. The power is there. It is not something the city was able to accomplish at this time. Though, uh, the steps are in place so that as developers come in, it's already there and they just need to put the final touches on it and include those, uh, going forward. Another thing, uh, just to carry on that conversation, another thing that Litchfield Park currently does not address, a lot of cities are starting to address as far as you need to have ten percent reserved for those sorts of situations. It's just a matter of, you know, the rebates are all gone, uh, the A P S take charge program, which was a free program to, you know, proliferate this as much as possible, all dried up. Uh, so it's just a matter of working with, you know, the Electrify America ChargePoint, uh, the Supercharger Network to find partners in that. And, you know, unfortunately, the city's not a partner of those conversations.
Do you have enough direction on the items you're, you're seeking today?
I do, thank you. So I, uh, I hear no, uh, trepidations or concerns about, uh, what's being presented. Certainly with landscaping, I'll have answers for you next time as well as questions that are being asked and uh, the blanks in those tables that have not been filled in yet, uh, with the parking stalls. Certainly I have direction on that. Uh, last little bit here, uh, with the ratios. I haven't heard any concerns about a flat one to two hundred. We think it's a good solve. You know, it's, one to two hundred is essentially the same five pages that Woody wrote five years ago, the same five pages I wrote this year as far as accomplishing the same things and we can be, I think, we think we can be more successful with developers as they come in. So they don't say, you know, I need, I really need an office user, I need to turn away a popular restaurant because I just can't park it. We know we're going to have concerns. We're addressing the concerns of the garage.
So, yeah, okay. Uh, nothing else. Move on to the next item for executive session. We don't have an executive session today, uh, so I'll entertain a motion for a German. First, and I'll go ahead and take ledgers for a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.